Let's bring this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Karen, do we have attendance? Great. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Just a second. Second. Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Karen, do we have citizens' comments?
I have one at this point. Do I have one?
Great. Okay. Great. Come on up to the podium. You've got three minutes.
Hello. My name is Lat and I'm a student at EMU and I've been a patron at ADL my whole life. This is about the new collection system at Mallett's Creek. I would personally never ever go to the Westgate Library if I had a chance because Mallett's Creek is my home library. So, Westgate is on the other end of town for me. But the Emerging Writers Workshop changed from meeting at Traverwood Library to Westgate, so I've had to spend a lot of more time there. I like to get to places early, so I often find myself browsing the shelves at Westgate and as a result finding new books I didn't know I wanted to read or recognized books I wanted to read two years ago and forgot about. I've discovered lots of books and genres I might have missed otherwise. It feels much easier to browse at Westgate and I've brought some discoveries with me today. I discovered Raising Steam by Terry Pratchett. This is the sequel to Making Money and Going Postal, two books that I really loved but I had no idea a third came out. And this book called Summer Days and Summer Nights, which is a book of short stories. This book was absolutely the thing I needed in the dead of winter this year and I didn't even know I needed it. And I discovered a bunch of new authors that I'd never heard of before reading this book. If I want something very specific from the library, I'll request it and it will magically be at Mallett's Creek. And I'll show up, check out, pick up my holds, and leave again. The new collection system is much easier to discover books with and I'm very excited to have it at Mallett's Creek. Thank you.
Thank you. That was lovely. That's super helpful. Thank you. Do we have any other comments, Karen? Great. So, folks, if you're feeling a bit shy in the beginning, you're welcome to offer comments at the end of the meeting, too. All right. Moving on. Financial reports. Bill?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
You have my report for March. As of March 31st, we have received fifteen million, eight hundred and one thousand and five dollars in tax receipts, which is ninety-seven point six percent of our estimated budget of tax receipts for the year. We are currently, there were no line items over budget, and we are at year-to-date revenue over expenditures of five million, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Is there any questions?
That's a nice number, Bill. Thank you for getting us there. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay. Great. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Executive committee. The executive committee met last week. We covered a bit on Josie's evaluation and made the discovery, or we were reminded that there is another step in the evaluation process where trustees will receive kind of a form to fill out upon reading Josie's evaluation. So, this is why we didn't have a closed session tonight. We're planning on having that next month. And we'll be able to review your feedback on Josie's evaluation then. We talked a bit about, gosh, I'm trying to remember. It was like a week ago. Usually, we have our executive committees prior to our board meeting, but with scheduling, I think it turned, it was just better for our schedules last week. We spoke a little bit about plans for the coming year, a little bit about a potential capital campaign for the library and what kind of things we'll need for that, including reaching out to, working closely with staff, trying to figure out how the reports that we got from the architecture firm a couple of months back would inform a capital campaign, the support that Josie would need for this effort. But, so, we're in the very, very beginnings of a conversation about this. I don't know. Jim, Kreen, am I missing anything else from when we met last week?
I just want to revisit, just to make it really clear with the evaluation process, which is something that we created anew for Josie last year with the support of a consultant. And this is the second time that we've gone through this process, so we're still trying to get the kind of the, trying to get the rhythm of it. So, what happens is Josie has submitted her self-evaluation to the executive committee, which we reviewed with her. And then, what will happen is that will be passed on now to the full board for review by Lynn. And I'm cribbing this all from a text message that Jamie sent to me because I was like, "I can't find the document." But I think it's worth saying out loud again what happens. You all look at, we all look at the document and everybody has the opportunity to provide feedback. There is a feedback sheet, which we're, we need to locate, I believe, and make sure that everyone gets a copy of that. Everyone fills out the feedback sheet, returns it. Lynn, as president, will collate that feedback and integrate it into essentially a written draft of our evaluation of Josie as a board. We have a chance to meet with Josie then, again, as a full board, to discuss that and give feedback verbally before we make that evaluation public in this meeting.
So, we've already done a first pass on giving our comments to Josie and Josie has already responded to that pretty quickly. So, thank you, Josie.
Yes. Thank you very much.
And has integrated our feedback. I think Josie is very humble and understated in the work that she does and always leans on the idea that it's really her, the team here at the library that's the secret sauce for all the things that happen here. It's the team. Yes. So, we've asked her to give a bit more insight into Josie's leadership and how the process that she has to make things, how she makes things happen here.
And one of the things we really wanted, in terms of our initial round of feedback, was to ask Josie to really dig into what does she see as some of the true challenges that are ahead of us and how we, especially as a board, working together.
Great.
I would also just, because we mentioned talking about a capital campaign, one of the conversations we had was about what it would mean for the library to really begin proactively fundraising. And that is, in response really to, you know, we continue to expand our services and we have ambitions to, you know, grow our service and sustain it, and our tax income does not grow larger with those ambitions. So, and in fact, at some point, it may decrease with the headly amendment. So, we are, we're sort of, we're exploring that idea. We have explored it before. We've talked about it in Budget and Finance Committees in years past. And this is not a new idea and this is something that the library has approached in the sort of distant past. So, I think it's important for everyone just to kind of begin to think about that. And as we move forward with that idea, you know, that would be, would need to be clarified in our approach to it.
And thankfully, we've had, we do have donors and supporters who give every year. They were acknowledged in the annual report.
That's right.
Josie has a great relationship and has the ability to cultivate these relationships more. So, but Josie can't do it alone. So, this is where we're kind of at in trying to figure out what the scope of the work might be, what the campaign might look like overall. So, at this point, it's super early. We don't have numbers. We're just trying to figure out, well, one, we're just thankful for the goodwill and the love for the library is out there and we're trying to just kind of organize around that.
I do think that there's, it is worth saying, of course, that we do receive these annual contributions, particularly from the Friends of the Library. And those are really valuable to us and keep the wheels turning, especially on the summer game. And I also, but I also think we all recognize that there's maybe some potential with individuals and even corporate sponsorships for certain kinds of programs and for growing what we want to do, which is also something we can talk about in strategic planning as well.
I was going to say, is this maybe something that we could use a consultant to advise on? Because it strikes me that it probably could use a lot of expertise in running successful capital campaigns.
Yes.
Yeah. And that was one of the things we discussed, although it's worth saying, of course, that Josie really wants, you know, Josie's really the face of the library and I think like, you know, wants to be doing this work with, you know, with someone who can kind of develop that kind of a plan.
But it's also already gone to Seattle Public Library had, was an event last year.
Yes. On the summer time, it was a fundraising for public libraries camp, conference. And libraries were all over North America and talked about fundraising. And I think that's where I got some really good questions answered about our situation. And most of them were very envious of our very active Friends group and the amount of money that the Friends give a library this size. And we're very clear on that, what a positive that is. And so, that, you know, and we were the, I was the only public library there without a foundation. And they were like, "Well, you don't necessarily need a foundation." And they're, so, it was good information and helpful. So, we have those connections.
So, we're just, we've got bits and pieces that we're collecting. We've got some work to do.
I want to second what Dharma said, which is I've worked with campaign firms before and firms that do development and fundraising and give advice. And I think, given that we don't have professional staff in this area, starting by looking at that is one element, one chess piece on the board, makes sense to me as well.
Great. So, executive committee. So, that's the gist of our meeting. Moving on to Budget and Finance Committee. Kelly?
So, we have ten minutes now, but we have two items on new business for the Budget and Finance Committee. We're heavily involved in, and one is recommending to the board and auditing firm to conduct our annual audit going forward. And also, the budget. It is annual budget time. We are going to talk about the budget this month with an eye toward making a recommendation to vote next month to approve a budget. So, we have thirty minutes on the schedule for that this evening. Our group met last Tuesday. We conducted three interviews with three auditing firms. We had an RFP that went out and it went out to eight or nine firms. I think nine, eight, Bill tells me. And we received three responses, three very good ones, and we interviewed each firm. I'm going to punt to the new business section beyond that. Do I have additions from Victoria or Dharma?
I think we actually have a representative from the firm that you ended up.
We do. I was going to wait to unload the whole thing at once in that section, but I can do it however we want to do it.
Sure. No, I think it was exciting.
I know. We love special guests.
All right. Great. Thank you. Moving on? Yes. Are you good? Great. Kelly? Okay. Strategic Planning Committee.
Jamie? So, we met just two days ago, was it? Feels like longer and sooner. So, we were joined by Carrie Sheldon and Josie, I don't think, Anika's last name escapes me. I'm sorry. I didn't put you on the spot.
I'm sorry. It went right off the window.
But the two of them work together for Bridgeport Consulting, of which Carrie is the founder.
Madeo.
Oh.
Madeo.
Yes. Anika Madeo. Thank you. So, we discussed the process by which we'll conduct our next strategic plan, which, we also discussed the duration of the plan, like whether it should be three years, five years, ten years. And we talked a little bit about the plans that have been created in the past. Process-wise, the two of them are planning to interview the trustees. So, you should be hearing from either them or Karen or some combination to schedule those interviews soon. And this is to sort of gather your individual or perhaps in pairs thoughts about the current state and potential future of the library and maybe the past a little bit, too. Just like your thoughts. And then, they will also be spending a lot of time, or I don't know if it's a lot, but a good amount of time with the staff. Because that's something that's an important component of creating the strategic plan. And over the years, I think it's been a bigger or smaller component of the plan. But all of us in the planning group felt like it would be a very useful and valuable way for them to spend their time. And then, of course, they will run our retreat, which sort of feeds into the creation of the plan as well. We talked a little bit about what that content would look like. And one possibility is that we might hear something about, if you were at the retreat last year, we heard about the sort of complete history of the downtown library, like everything that has moved around or changed about it. It was really interesting. So, we might do something similar with meeting room use this time, which I think should be equally fascinating. But yeah, so, it's sort of like a good kickoff meeting, I think. And as far as the duration of the plan, it seemed like people were pretty settled on three years. Like, you know, things kind of vary when it comes to strategic plans. But I think it's, the general trend is going towards shorter strategic plans with this, like, just recognition that the world changes quickly and you don't want to be locked into or held back by something that's like, you know, not matching the direction you're going. So, did I miss anything?
We had a little bit of conversation about tactical plans versus strategic plans and sort of the level of detail at which it's useful to have a plan that can hold up. I think that's something that will work out as we work on the plan, but know that I think that is something we need to move forward with. The last plan was very detailed. It had a lot of sub-points on it. And we'll have to decide as a group if we want to go that same direction or if we want to go sort of higher-level strategy and less about the tactics. I was struck when I read the plan from twenty years ago, which Karen very kindly sent me after our last meeting, at how tactical it was, how it was like, "Do this program," very specific. Does anyone have any initial thoughts about tactical versus strategic?
So, you're saying that our most recent plan was more on the tactical side or building?
I would say so.
To a strategy through tactics, like, but very specific.
I would say it had more, it had, in my opinion, others might disagree, it had a level of detail which was easy to see as you could only fulfill an individual item by doing exactly what it said as opposed to laying out a strategy that gave the staff room to meet the goals in many ways.
Build a website. There's twenty ways to build a website, but you're going to build a website. Right? That's tactical.
Even building a website is like tactical. It might even, it might be just like improve accessibility.
Exactly.
And having a new website might be that tactic, right?
Right.
The staff would come up with, right?
I think having a tactical plan has served us very well. I mean, I'm glad to talk, to kick that topic to the retreat. Was, in your initial discussion, did you have a leaning or was there?
I think I had an interest in thinking about the ways we could be served by a broader-ranging, shorter plan. That'd be more easy to say, okay, these are the five areas as opposed to what felt like sort of all the operations of the library. But I should say that was an initial thought as opposed to a, "This is what we got to do."
Yeah. I would like less of an operations manual. And we have a library director who runs operations. I would like to just think big picture, big visions. This is an opportunity for all of us to really come around and hear and get the feedback from staff because they're the ones who are on the ground, on the daily, that knows the community better than we do. So, I would like to see, you know, us talk about equity more. So, equity, accessibility, outstanding needs, right? So, there, where there's tons of big issues we can touch on, but, I mean, I'm a social worker at a library. So, I'd rather go less operations, less tactical, and more like future visioning.
Lynn, you used the word aspirational two meetings ago when you were introducing the topic of revisiting a strategic plan. And that's, that to me is the shining word of the strategic plan. We want, we want an aspirational strategic plan. Thanks.
I think there's a really interesting opportunity for the board to have, you know, its own kind of set of tactics for the things that are the most important to us.
Yeah. That's a good point.
And I would, I think we're in a really good position to do that right now. It was something I think we all kind of like were sort of gesturing towards in the last plan, but it just didn't, it really didn't quite come together in the way I think we thought it would.
Can you say more about that? Because I don't know really what you mean.
Yeah. Like, what's most important to us as sort of a governing body? What are the things that we might want to accomplish on the highest level? And also, what are the things that we might want to, we might want to change about the way that we operate that would make the library more, you know, potentially more successful in certain areas? So, really taking a close look, sort of a self-evaluation. And, you know, we don't get a lot of opportunities necessarily to do that.
Because this board has changed considerably.
Yeah. We're a very different board than we were a few months ago, so.
Right. And we've, I mean, even having the board meetings live streamed or hopefully there's twenty people watching right now, at least. I don't know. Fingers crossed. That was a big, that was a big, that was a big change for the board. We had gone in the committees, working, you know, actually doing our deliberations at our meetings was a big deal. So, I guess maybe we can start thinking more about the culture of the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's a great, I'm glad you brought it up. And, because I think we often like try to, we try to have that discussion in other contexts when it's not really like the point of another discussion. Like, I feel like it frequently kind of comes up when we, honestly, when we conduct Josie's annual evaluation, we end up kind of talking about how we're functioning as a group, which is not, of course, fair to Josie. But it's like, I think, just a symptom of the fact that we don't really have an opportunity or we don't, we don't make an opportunity to address our functioning as a group. It's a great idea.
Do we have an interest in discussing it at the retreat? It's a chance for us to publicly discuss, I mean, the seven of us need to do our work in public and be a chance for us to talk about boards.
Definitely. Can you tell us what are the next steps for the strategic plan?
So, my understanding is the next step is that you'll be contacted for these interviews.
Okay.
And then, the agenda for the retreat will get finalized. I don't think we can really expect to see much further beyond, I mean, the retreat's really soon. It's like a month from now, too. So, so, those are the immediate next steps. And then, after the retreat, I think there'll be some like digesting of what comes out of that to figure out what direction to go next.
I should recall, but I frankly don't, the timeline on when we want to have our strategic plan developed.
It was a pretty long timeline that we initially set out.
January twenty twenty.
Yeah. So, we got time. And we have all those like commitments to public meetings regarding the plan to come, so.
I think because Carrie has a chance to talk to everyone individually, that one of the, one of the things she should query us all on is like, how are things going? Like, what kind of questions do you have about governance and operations that could be addressed through these questions of culture and, you know, changes to bylaws if that's necessary? And that way, we maybe have like a sort of starting place for our more public conversation. I mean, some of those things are already have surfaced in how we do business in here and in a couple of the committees. So, especially with new folks and all that. Yeah.
Great. Thank you for getting that started. I'm excited. We have now until January twenty twenty to present it and then a couple of opportunities to work to publicize it and communicate it with the community at large. So, time will fly quickly. We might feel like January twenty twenty is far away, but it's gonna, it's gonna sneak up on us.
Can I just give a shout out? I'm so happy to work with Jamie, who I've never actually been on a committee with at the library. And you, too, Lynn.
Oh, thanks.
It's gonna come out great. I'm so glad to have, work on it with you both.
Yeah. I'm glad to work on it with you, too. It's funny how, you know, we are all in this group, but we don't always get that much of an opportunity to do work together.
Right.
It's good that we, you know, are all, we have our conversations here. But yeah. But yeah, I'm glad for the opportunity to.
So we should remind folks to come to the, the retreat. I know everyone's...
May 14th.
Yes, so yeah.
In the afternoon at Westgate, I believe.
Downtown?
At Westgate?
No, it's on the fourth floor. It is downtown. Sorry, my mistake.
I would have shown on the Westgate.
Yeah, no, no, no. It's downtown on the fourth, the fourth floor meeting room. You're right. So we tried to get it to be at Westgate. Westgate's busy.
We have an issue about meeting rooms. Great, I'm excited. It'll be a really good retreat. It'll be really productive.
And I just would say, especially since we're gonna talk about meeting rooms, it'd be great to talk about the space that we're sitting in then.
Yes.
We feel, as folks who have used Westgate most recently, for a very similar.
Yes. For folks who aren't aware, we, the board had used, had met on the fourth floor. And it was in a really structured, more formal meeting room style. And I'm so glad to be down here. Well, I'm glad to be down here because we have to be down here in order to broadcast our, our, our meetings. And it freed up that fourth room for, for other events. Because that, that fourth floor room can actually fit a number of people, right?
Renovated, yes. We changed it.
So we're actually pretty good with folding tables. So thank you to this board for being open to a more relaxed environment so we can be more accessible to folks. Great, so anything else in Strategic Planning Committee? No? Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on, Josie, the director's report.
Thank you. This is the new entryway graphics that went up this weekend downtown lobby going into the kids department. Very different from what was in the past. So this was the, we were waiting on this final piece, so that was done over the weekend. So we're very happy with it. The National Library Week for us started out with a great lecture by Sarah Vowell. It was part of the Penny Stamps Lecture Series. It was their last lecture of the year. And it kicked off National Library Week. She was amazing. If you have not read anything she's written, I recommend it. If you want, if you're not, if you don't think you're a history person, you will become a history person, American history person, the way she writes. She writes the way she talks, and the way she talks is the way she thinks. And I'm sure it's what people, the same type of love people give her from This American Life. And the audience at Michigan Theater, it was packed, the old theater, the original theater was packed, balcony included. And you could, it was clear that people were there who were readers, people were there who were listeners. So she had her full audience. What, she said a couple of things that I felt were so amazing to hear. She's in Ann Arbor. She's at where U of M is. And she talks about the, the power of an education in a land-grant university. She went to Mon, she went to Boise, right, Montana?
Montana State University.
Montana State. And she talked about how most, most people, her generation, were educated in non-Ivy League or non-elitist, high, top-tier universities. Most are educated in some other way. And, and she named a few people from her community and what they've achieved, and the world knows who they are. And it was pretty amazing. It was very powerful. And she talked about a radio show that she listened to, that she loved, from Montana State and from the public radio program there. And she said it was like, watch, it was like listening to Hee Haw, but everyone had a PhD. And it's all of the professors from the land-grant university talking about the research and what they were doing and how it matters. And as someone who grew up front row on the floor watching Hee Haw, it was a great moment for me because I knew exactly what she was talking about. She was extremely interesting. And so we were very happy to be included in this with Penny Stamps, U of M Library, Jamie, thank you, the Library of Art and Design, the Grad Library, NPR and PPS. So it was a wonderful kickoff to this week, which is National Library Week, and so wanted to say that.
Can I just add something, Josie? So I wrote down one thing she said. She was describing her childhood and how she would go to like Werner Herzog movies and Missoula, Montana. And she said, "We were the kind of snobs you can have anywhere, anywhere you have a public library." And I thought that was like, oh.
It was great.
She was great.
She was great, so. There she is. She does not like her picture made, so if you can't tell, that's very fair she is. She did a pod, she came here to the podcast studio and she did a debut episode for us, for our new ADL Reads podcast that we're gonna be putting out. So you'll be able to hear her from Ann Arbor, from ADL, a podcast about reading and her books, so we're happy about that.
Who interviewed her?
Ellie, librarian Ellie.
I'm, I'm curious to know how the, just for the mechanics of it, how the collaboration comes together with Penny Stamps and the library? And, you know, like, who, how, how's it initiated and?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something that could happen more now that I think about it because there are probably lots of times where the interests of the library might overlap with the interests of the stamp series. And, you know, the two groups together, it's a very large venue. That's a really nice thing about it. Because a free talk with someone like her, you know, like...
Off the hook.
Right, exactly. It was great. So, yeah, I mean, I've been thinking that like it'd be nice for, for that to happen more in the future.
What's the audience like? Was it a good mix of students and, and locals?
Well, so it's like to be sort of like clearer, I guess, or more transparent. So I was involved in this for my work self, which is I'm the librarian for Art and Design. And so I work directly with the stamp school in my work. And all of the stamp students have to go to that lecture. It's like a required course. So there are always 600 undergraduates and like a handful of master's students at that talk. So I was telling Christina, who runs it afterwards, it's like the U of M football game. It's like the only time where you see like this really big group of students and a really big group of the community or like basically a bolder people, like together in one place, like attending the same thing. It's, it's really cool. Yeah, and they don't always just bring, I think you might think they would just bring like fine artists, but they bring a really wide variety of people.
There have been times I've been at the library here and I'll see books from the series, like the artists who are coming in, the designers who are speaking, and I can grab their books. And I can never make it because it's 5 o'clock on Thursdays because of work schedules. But a lot of my friends who are, say, retired teachers, they love it. So it's a real like nice mix of townie student. But also the quality of speakers that come in is so dynamite. Even if you've never heard of them, they're incredible speakers.
Right, yeah.
So we are on Anchor for Full Moon and Festivals, if you don't know. Another partnership that we've been involved in for over 10 years. We are a stable, consistent partner in this and have been for a long time. This is our booth. This was at Carytown this year. It moved from on the street down to Carytown. So this was our booth this year. And this is our, our staff contingent for Full Moon and Festivals, and they were really into it. It's amazing. And I want to say, also, we had, you'll, we, this, in the, in the last months, we keep a, we, we look at the top, the, the top events for numbers. And Full Moon and Festivals had the most people involved in events here making costumes. And this year, it was a bird theme. You could see Laura Rayner in the center back there with her, her bird of paradise, her amazing hat. And the young lady on the end is clearly a peacock, and then Ellie is a swan. And you keep, if you look, you can see what, see what they are. And we had a huge crowd of people show up here to walk with the library in the parade. And that's happened for a long time. So we'll continue to be involved in Festival and Festivals and Full, Full, I can, my accent gets in the way. Full, Full Moon. This is what Mounts Creek looks like right now. It's a little bit different than what it looked like a week or so ago. So what you're seeing is the, the gentlemen in working, taking up the court flooring. All of the furniture is stacked up on one side and the materials are all pretty much in the multipurpose room there, in the meeting room there, in rows. And the re-cataloguing is happening while this all is happening so that these two things come together at the same time. So that was Friday, or Thursday. I think it was Thursday. We were down there Thursday. And so that's what it looked like. So it looked even different, more different today. I thought it was an interesting picture. This is the fourth floor staff area today, probably a couple hours ago. The painting is done, the flooring is, the LBT is going in where the staff lounge is going to be. And then that's the old carpet still from 1989 that's on the floor. And that will be gone early next week, I mean, early, late this week. It's coming up. And then we're hoping to have people back in place in this space. And I won't mess up here because Lynn is right there. End of next week. Or early the week after. Yes, we got it, okay.
This is 30-year-old carpet.
That, right, that is. That is the last of the carpet that was put in this building in 1989. That's the last of it, so. Well, you got someone on the third floor. Why not, why? I thought that was dealt with a long time ago. Huh, okay.
It's vintage.
Well, it looks so bad, you can't tell that it is 1989 carpet. So I thought this was the last of it, so. But we are going to redo that space this coming year, so it will be gone. These are posters from the upcoming events that are, we call the festival season. With one exception, there's not a poster for Visions. Record Store Day was this past Saturday. The door count was 2,749 people. Last year was 2,391. So the 18th of May is Gardening and DIY Fest, which is another one that we, really brings a ton, a lot of interest in that. Followed by ACME, which is the Ann Arbor Creativity and Making Expo. And that is Sunday, the next day. So that weekend is huge here, Sunday, May 19. We avoided a Mother's Day event this year, which is May 12. So, and then Visions is the middle of the week on Wednesday, May 15. And it's here again this year. Last year, it was so well-attended that we decided that we could do it annually and keep it downtown. It's been at WCC in the Mars Lawrence Building for many, many years. It started here in this room.
Can you, can you explain what Visions is?
Visions is the, it's a, it's a event we do for people with low vision or their caregivers or support community for people with low visions to bring whatever's new in technology primarily to supporting people who have low vision or no sight. And it's a service we provide through our Library for the Blind, which we maintain here. And we bring speakers in to talk to consumers about what's available to them with technology to help them main, continue their careers, maintain independence within their families and what's the, what's possible for them with devices. What's always so affirming is how much people already know and the questions they ask are so astute and intriguing about what the technology does. And how much that has changed just in 10 years in terms of the independence people have now. And what, they do not have to give up reading. They do not have to give up traveling alone anywhere now. That's, and that came across last time. There's a, was a new application that's available and that, the whole talk and discussion about being able to travel alone again. So it's a very powerful day. Different organizations in the community step up and ask to work with us that day as guides because we need people to help all of our consumers get around in the building in a seamless way. And we had, we've had volunteers from Duo Security. We've had volunteers from ProQuest. We've had volunteers from the campus Kiwanis, I believe. Yes, yes. And so this year will be volunteers from other groups to helping do that. And they love doing it. And the, the feedback from the consumers is how nice everyone is to them and how much they appreciate that and enjoy that. So it's a lot of work for us because of all the special steps we have to take to make sure the building is welcoming to a large, hundreds of people on a day where we're opening it for them in a way that's comfortable and safe and for all their dogs. We have many dogs in the library that day, and so we have to make sure that that all works out. It is, it is. It's great. This is the summary of public and staff comments. This is about Record Store Day. We had, as you saw, about 2,800 people coming through and a few walking away with some new treasures. And you can see people going through the boxes. This is a, I think, I want to make sure, I'm in, am I, am I with you, Rich? Okay. So the bestselling author Tahera Mahfi visited us April 5 for a standing room-only event in partnership with Literati. And this was Making One Book Lover's Day, as you see in the comment. Our Diverse Voices event kicked off National Poetry Month at ADL. Poets included Marlon M. Jenkins, Hasna Galib, Jasmine An, and current youth poet laureate of Ann Arbor, Aldo Leopoldo, Pando Girard, among others. And ADL visitors walked away with some amazing creations from cross-stitch and screen printing programs that where you learned how to cross-stitch and finish my first project. That's, brings back some memories for me. A curious visitor checks out our Everbright. And if you notice, the comments are in Japanese. And they actually say, "At Ann Arbor, at Michigan Life, at Overseas Parenting, and I also like that library." And the next one says in Portuguese. Is that right? Oops, this is Portuguese. So I'm, so I'm missing, I'm at the honeycomb. Okay, thank you. There's the honeycomb. "Honeycomb hangouts with my little bumblebee. And if you're wondering, up inside, if you get in and look up, you see the sky, you see stars, so."
I guess I've never looked up all the times I've been...
Only, only in that honeycomb, that one, only in that one, right. The caption to this photo translates to, "From the series, Things We Do Not Have." And right below, also translated, "I was studying in this library." So what happened is these other posts were made and then someone else who was in the library was following and posted in the language as well. So all at the same time. Language, and that language is Portuguese. Third graders from Mitchell visited ADL for a program with 826 Michigan and left with books and library cards. The person who took this photo writes, "Our new library books didn't even make it back to school before being cracked open." So they're on the bus reading their books. You may have seen our delivery truck outside. The new, the new wrap for it is a collage of covers from material that's been published through Fifth Avenue Press. And Teba Platt wrote Snail, I Love You with her young daughter Willa, who's under 10 years old. And they worked with fabric artist illustrator Becky Grover. She's also a pretty big fan of the truck. And her third book release is on Sunday, May 5. So there'll be five more books released through Fifth Avenue Press on Sunday, May 5.
Josie, do you mind if I say something about that? I noticed the, the wrap has the tagline for the press, which I had never noticed before. And I love that it says publicly owned. I know that in the meeting, we, we talked about that, like, what does it mean for the library to take on this risk of doing this thing and to like give up the potential ownership of any one of these items that gets produced? And I think it's really cool that you're owning that and celebrating it in the tagline.
And I, you know, it's, it's really hard now, it's for the authors, as you heard, Thompson Shore is changing, has changed. And a number of the people here were, their hard copies were being published by Thompson Shore, so they're looking for other options. But the, what the library does is not that. So this, the work continues and then the work, the concern about how to do this in a physical way. But I was at the launch for all these titles. And it was great fun to see this truck, because traveling around town. It's about books, right? It's about reading. It's great. Compliments on the material ADL offers, as well as compliments on what Ann Arbor is reading from this one. We got kudos for our vinyl collection featuring Kendrick Lamar. And one patron is impressed with the number of holes on some recent releases about race, culture, gender, and body image, complimenting the library on holding the titles and on the fact that the community wants to read them so much that they're hopeless for them. That album is called Damn, by the way. I can just hear that, damn. So Lynn, Louis Picasso is for the children. The Ipsy-based MC and producer recently partnered with the ADL at our Beat Lab and he shared his introduction, his production workflow and technique with all sorts of people, young people and all sorts of people. But he brought a young person with him and prior to the event, they were playing around. And then working with young adults from WISD and the Fourth Wall Theater Company, we hosted this amazing song search finale right here in the multipurpose room. And we have been working in partnership with the WISD for all the years that I've been involved with the library in various ways. And the Fourth Wall Theater is one of the oldest. And the work that they do in helping special needs students work together on a production, decide what it's going to be, do the, do the lines, do the music, do everything. It's pretty astonishing. And it's great, if you've never been to one of their productions, I encourage you to come to a Fourth Wall event, here or someplace else, because they do this elsewhere as well. That's my report. Any questions or comments?
I have, um, I thought it would be worthwhile to bring up how, um, there, there was an event that happened in the lot next to us last Monday. We were here for our executive committee meeting, actually. We came shortly after, it's two news helicopters circling the area. So, um, I wanted to bring it up only because I received a lot of messages from the community asking what happened at the library lot, if we are aware of it. And when I came for executive committee meeting and checked in with security from the back lot, I was really relieved to hear that library staff were safe. And security was on top of it, they were circling the building. And when I spoke with you, you had already spoken with the police. So if you're unaware, unaware of what happened, there was a stabbing in the, in the library lot, parking lot.
In the garage.
In the garage. I think there was a young man who's still in the hospital, recovering, right? And the police had the two suspects. Well, I wanted to bring it up only because, you know, I, I was so happy to hear that, you know, when I was talking to security staff, and obviously when I was talking to you, you're, you're so aware of, uh, of what happens in the library and, and who the, who the usual patrons are and what usually happens at the library. And I was really, it was, I was really glad to hear that you had already worked with the detectives, and they're on their way. But there are procedures in place for when things like this happen in the library or outside the library, at least we, um, we can collaborate with authorities. So there was a concern that's out there. It doesn't involve us, but we're neighbors. And thank you for cooperating with, with the police.
Thank you. That's an opportunity to actually pitch something. There's a movie playing at the Michigan Theater. It's called The Public. Emilio Estevez wrote it, produced it. I think he's part of the direction of it, and he stars in it with a number of other big-name Hollywood stars. It's about an event that occurred, fictitious event occurred at the Cincinnati Public Library during a polar vortex a few years ago. The actual event is fictitious, but all of the, all of the information that builds to that event and supports it is real. It's real there, it's real here, it's real in libraries that have urban-type environments, small like ours, into major big cities. And I saw it, I, I can, I can wholeheartedly say that if people are not aware of all that there is their public library, seeing the public is a, is a good opportunity to do that.
This is at the Michigan Theater?
Sorry, one, one thing that was included in the ephemera packet is, is the ALA State of the Library twenty-nineteen document, which I would just say, yeah, I was, I was looking at it earlier today and scanning it again this evening, and just thinking about people really giving that document a, a close read as we go into strategic planning. There were a couple of things that really jumped out at me in particular, in thinking about trends and how, you know, certain things are being addressed. And I was also sort of delighted that Drag Queen Story Hours really rose to the level of like, the State of the Library report for the whole country, as it should be, in my opinion. But I just felt, I, I was like, I, I don't, I don't ever recall having looked at this report before, but we get so much information that, you know, sometimes things stick for me and they don't. But I really appreciate your sharing that, Josie, and I think it could be timely, given our sort of thinking about.
I'm not sure it's been produced this way.
Yeah.
I mean, different ALA presidents do things differently. And honestly, not sure it's been put, put out in this way.
Yeah. Thanks for sharing.
Any other questions for Josie? Did we have Drag Queen Story Hour?
We don't.
Someone reached out to me for referrals for Drag Queen Story Hour here, so I gave a few names.
Good.
As well as lots of other LGBTQ programming, so I'm excited.
Which was one of the things that was really highlighted in this piece about just kind of the LGBT programming, related programming in books being a real controversy in the country and sort of the source of a lot of protests. So I think it's worth thinking about here, for sure.
What have been successfully implemented, even in the much smaller communities, much smaller communities that are arguably, you know, less progressive than, but, um, so I'm excited too.
RuPaul, bring me my drag queens.
Let's make it happen, all right. Okay, Josie, are we, are we good then for a record store report? Thank you, Josie. Moving on to old business, Lynn, for an update on construction projects.
As Josie mentioned, we've been closed at Mallards for a week. The furniture's been moved, flooring's going, well, it's still coming up, actually, prep work for that. We did the layout for the meeting rooms, the structural beams last Friday. The glass measurements were this morning, or, yes, this morning. We're gonna, um, scan the floor tomorrow for the heat loops, for putting the penetrations in the floor. So it's going well. Staff have relabeled twelve thousand seven hundred items.
Oh, my gosh.
So that's about twenty-three percent of what needs to be relabeled, which is amazing. So that's going extremely well. And hopefully, we'll start getting some flooring down this week and get some shelves moved back to where they'll, they'll live when this is over. And as Josie mentioned, the fourth floor will be complete the end of next week. Flooring will be this week. Some of the countertops will come in. And then the furniture arrives on the twenty-second. Take a couple days to assemble all of that, and we'll get staff back in the end of next week. So everything is, right now is on schedule and going well.
So when you talk about relabeling, you're talking about relabeling for the system that's, that we had, our, our public commenter come and speak about, okay?
Yes.
Good.
And you're putting cork back down, is that?
We are, yep. It basically, the flooring matches what was there. The carpet's a little different. Obviously, it's been fifteen years, so that we can't match it identically, you know, to an identical match, but it's really close. I don't think anyone will notice. It's really close, so. That's probably the most difficult part, is matching the beams, matching the flooring, and then getting the cork installed. And this is the first time I've been involved with the cork floor. It's really tough coming up.
Yeah, yeah, I bet.
Really is, so.
I'm glad you're putting it back down, though. It's like the Mallards Creek Hallmark.
Any questions about the project?
I don't think so. Great, thank you, Lynn.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, so we have an item of action. This is the resolution adopting provisions to the meeting room use policy.
I would move to approve the resolution to adopt provisions to meeting room policy. The board resolves as follows. One, the meeting room policy four point one is revised as proposed on page twenty-six of your board packet. And two, that all resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
Second?
Go for it.
Thanks, Jim, for just jumping right in.
You know how I like reservations.
Perfect. All those in favor? Or, wait, discussion, yes. Any discussion on this? We had a first reading last month. Any thoughts? So just to kind of review, this is a revision for the meeting room policy so that we are in line with, let's see.
It's not there. It's just about case law, current case law at the federal level. And we're taking this sentence out, that library meeting rooms are not available for religious services or social events. And adding in language that is inclusive in terms of who can be in a meeting space in the library.
Yes.
I'm glad that came up last time and that it's in the solution, it looks good.
We took that from other policies that we have.
Great.
Any, any questions, any, any other thoughts?
I have just one question. First of all, I think this looks great. I'm so happy to see the inclusive language made broader. I think my one question I've sometimes wondered about, when a group books a meeting room, how does the group determine who's in the group and allowed in the room during the reservation? Does that make any sense? They're not open.
If it's not a rental, it's a public room, it's a public.
Anyone can use the space, or if it's a rental, they've rented the space.
Correct.
But if a study group has booked one of our open rooms, technically, anyone is welcome to join.
Technically, and the list of rent, the list of bookings is on a, is outside the room and with the hours, and so anyone can see it. If it's a study group someone's interested in, or whatever. I've walked in on those myself, where I've been curious about the topic. It's generally not a problem. If it's a board meeting of a local nonprofit or a neighborhood association meeting, most people are not gonna be interested in that necessarily, unless they're involved. But for, for our purposes, unless it's a rental, it's.
It is available.
Right. And, and even a rental, no one's borrowing, bar, barring the door. So not even, not even. It's still a public space, first and foremost, yes.
But we're not imagining people inviting themselves to birthday parties or weddings in a, in a little.
Actually, we're, it's likely. Birthday parties happen now, and that's part of why I wanted the social events taken out, because you have a meeting room at a place like Westgate, and the family books the room, and they show up with a cake and the punch in their, in meeting room B. And the kids are all in the library doing what kids do in the library, and they come back in for their punch and their cake in a library where food's allowed. I didn't want us saying to them, "That eight-year-old birthday party's done." I didn't, that's not the role for the library. We do not want to be ruining birthdays for little children. That's not what we were gonna do. There is nothing to stop someone from walking out into the garden area with a minister or justice of peace, or someone who's, who's allowed to conduct a marriage ceremony and stand quietly out there and, on the day of their choice, the time of their choice, and have a marriage performed at the library in the garden.
Has that ever happened?
I'm almost certain it has, yes. And so I think that that's, those are things that we don't, we don't really feel it's important to discourage. We're not gonna be a wedding venue where we're gonna provide all the bells and whistles for a big wedding. But at the same time, I don't want us walking up to someone and saying, "I'm so sorry, you can't get married here."
Right.
And, and you either have the rules, or you don't. I mean, it is a, there's a way to, um, we can be flexible about a lot of things, like the no shoes, no shoes in the library. People are encouraged to wear shoes in the library, but that doesn't apply to toddlers. It makes sense, right? So I'm trying to make this, um, I'm trying to make it easier for people to use it in the unobtrusive ways they might choose to. But at the same time, we have a policy that prevents us from being, the library from being taken advantage of, or uses occurring in the library that diminishes the experience for all others. And that's what we want to avoid. How do we do that?
Great, thank you, Josie, for, for that reminder. Great, any other discussion? Shall we vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, that motion passes then. Thank you. Moving on.
I would move to approve the resolution to adopt provisions to smoke, the smoke-free policy. The board resolves as follows. One, that smoke-free policy six point five is revised as proposed. That's on page twenty-eight of your board packet. Two, that all resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
I second, and I wonder how we got through last month without Jim.
I know, so I'm super eager tonight.
Discussion.
Our discussion last month about this topic was helpful, and, um, I feel fully confident that this is the right policy for us at this time. This is about e-cigarettes and vaping, and that, um, is it a problem? And yes, we heard from our staff that it is a problem. The more I've talked this month to people who are in closed spaces with people who have been vaping, it is a problem, not necessarily for people with allergies, but people, just people who are, have sensitive senses of smell.
Any other thoughts?
I, I agree with Colleen in terms of the large import of what this is trying to do. I have one minor point, which is, I think there's just a typo in the third paragraph, the second sentence. Smoking has been proven dangerous to both users and persons exposed to secondhand smoke dash environmental tobacco smoke. That dash, I'm not, is there supposed to be an end there perhaps?
We can look at it. I think it's how it's been in the policy. We didn't retype the whole policy, so I, we can.
That kind of change you could make, though, just to fix a typo.
It doesn't have to come back to you.
Right, the, the import of this is clear, but there's just something funny about the typing of it here.
Great. Any other thoughts? No smoking in the library. Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
No dueling either, no dueling.
Yes.
I would move to approve the resolution to, for accounting firm Yo and Yo to complete the library's audit for fiscal year July first, twenty eighteen, through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
A sec, can we get a second? Second? Uh, discussion.
So this is our new business topic. Okay, I'm gonna take it back as the treasurer and chairperson of the Budget and Finance Committee. Last Tuesday, as I mentioned earlier, our committee interviewed three accounting firms to take on the business of conducting our audit and performing our nine-ninety. During those three interviews, at the end of that, those conversations, Victoria, Dharma, and I decided to recommend and request that we bring to you Yo and Yo is, is the firm that we have chosen. Dan Beard joins us tonight. He is from Ann Arbor and would be working with us. I'll just give a brief overview of that conversation. The proposal that we received from Yo and Yo is in your packet, but I think the conversation we had with, with them really is what brought us to them in terms of the decision. So what I loved, the principals that we met with, Dave and Jamie, I'm sorry, blinging on their last names. They both serve as elected officials who, who are on school boards in their districts. They were able to have the kind of conversation with us about doing public service work. It was very informed, not to be comparative, but in, in a way that, that made them stand out from the other firms. I think both Dave and Jamie brought to the conversation, not only was it clear that they're experts in the, in their field, it's also clear that they're really good with governmental organizations, and libraries in particular. When Dave talked about the Saginaw Library and his commitment to and partnership with it, he was able to talk about it like we think about the library. And when they talked about process and the work that they would do and the way they would take over our work and our audit, it was also more about, "Give us what you have right now, and we will work with you. We're not going to expect you to come our way and work within our constructs." That was very appealing. During those interviews, Bill, Eli, and Josie were present, and were able to ask questions, and they all asked very, very good questions as well, that helped us really have, given apple to, the apples comparison across those three conversations. I'll let Dharma and Victoria weigh in on this.
Yeah, I would just add, I was really impressed with their transition plan. It seemed really well-thought-out, and it also seemed like there wasn't gonna be an additional burden, the staff. I was also impressed by like, their organizational vision and commitment to what they do, experience with libraries, and also working with the city of Ann Arbor. Those are all big pluses to me.
And I agree with what both Colleen and Dharma have said. I would add that Yo and Yo impressed me particularly with their team approach, less risk of, there's one or two great people, and more of a sense of, whatever happens in the intervening years, they're gonna be able to meet our needs in a way that respects the time of our staff, which often we don't think about when we think about the bottom line, but staff time is money, and we want them free to do all sorts of things for the library. But I will also say, it, there, there were other good candidates. I thought we were fortunate in that if, it, it wasn't a clear case that there's only one person who can do this for us. I think Yo and Yo offers us the best chance of the highest success. But it was reassuring to feel like we, that people want to work for the library and were putting out some nice proposals for us.
Yeah, we had, we talked to three very strong, capable firms during the course of those several hours. Other, other, other things from, from Josie? One thing that Josie said during the conversation is she had a really nice reaction when we talked about the people who would be onsite with Yo and Yo. when we talked about the people who would be on site with Yo and Yo, um, which is, they ha, they are experienced, I believe was the way you put it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you, Eli, Bill, have things you would like to add about these conversations? Okay.
Bill has one.
Um, I would just like to, to add that when I called and spoke with the references they had listed, I got very positive feedback from everyone, um, that they are, um, very easy to work with. They, they complete the audit and presentations to the governing bodies, um, within the deadlines. Um, um, the field work that they do, um, does not interrupt the staff. Um, they work around with, with the staff for the least amount of interruption, and, um, they're, they're just wonderful people to work with, so.
Great. And how, how large is the firm again? Do, it's, it's eight hundred?
Roughly two hundred employees.
Okay.
One hundred and fifty.
I guess I had. Okay. Great. Thank you. Yeah. Dan, do you have anything you want to say to the board before we, before we vote? You're welcome to come up and introduce yourself. We'd love to, love to hear from you.
Uh, I'm Dan Beard. I'll be one of the, uh, staff, well, seniors on the engagement, and I'm just excited for the opportunity, uh, being an Ann Arbor resident and a patron of the Ann Arbor District Library. So, thank you for, for this, for putting us on the floor.
Thank you.
Any questions or?
I guess we're excited for the audit. We're excited to vote. We're excited to vote for the, and to get the audit going.
Yeah.
So thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely.
Um, you're welcome to give public comments later on, too. So if you wanna do a twofer, you can, you're welcome to. Thank you.
I have only one more question for the committee and Josie, which is, how does the fee compare to what we have been doing and sort of where do we fall with this, with this particular fee in relationship to what others were, were bidding?
I see, I see Josie, uh, motioning Bill over. We did the math on it when, when, when we looked at the pricing. It is a, a mild bump up. What we actually liked about this proposal is, um, the, the RFP we put out said, this is a one-year contract with a right to extend or not. Um, they front-loaded higher on the front end.
Yeah. Startup cost, yeah.
Yeah, the startup cost is significant, which means they were mindful of their time, and they're not going to short-shrip us if it gets into heavier labor. Bill?
Right. You're correct. I mean, that's what I was gonna say, yes.
Well, it was, it was impressive, because they answered it right off. They didn't, they didn't, they didn't back away from the fact that it was front-loaded, because they're gonna do all this work, and it's a one-year, it's one year, it's a ton of work. And, um, and yet, and if we, if we negotiate for the second and third year, they have the prices there for that, which included having front-loaded everything. So it was, uh, it was impressive that, that's how they go about their business there. It's a business, and so they were able to talk about it that way, so.
Great. Thank you, Bill, again. Great. So are we able to vote? Have we, everyone, okay, are we ready? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. The motion passes. Welcome, Yo and Yo.
Congratulations.
And thank you, yes.
And thanks to the committee for bringing this forward. I mean, that's a lot of work to interview all these firms. I'm not the chair anymore.
Oh, we missed you, man.
We had some hummus.
We had some hummus.
Yeah, Karen got us vegetables and hummus and feta.
No, thank you, Karen. Working, teamwork makes the dream work.
Um, moving on, so discussion of proposed, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. Um, Bill again. We should've just had you stay up. I'm sorry, Bill.
That's fine. Colleen, did you wanna talk about anything before I go into it?
Um, let's let Bill go into it, but, um, the committee did, um, take on budget, because it was a really long night because of the audit firm interviews. He spent about thirty minutes talking about the budget. In past years, uh, with Jim at the helm, we had, I would say, three more substantive discussions, but not necessarily. We had, in the previous meeting, talked about budget and process more so. Um, so some of our conversations tonight in front of the full board, we'll dive into that.
Great.
Okay, great. All right, Bill.
Okay, on page thirty and thirty-one, you'll find, um, the narrative, uh, for the proposed budget, and on, uh, page thirty-two are the, um, are the numbers. Um, I'm not gonna read over everything, but I am gonna touch on, um, some of the more important parts. Uh, we'll go over the, um, tax revenue estimation. Uh, we are, um, projecting, um, revenue at a one point eight three eight three mils, um, of an additional five point five K over what our current approved budget is. Um, and as, I don't know if all of you know or not, but we are, um, under the Headley Act, so as the tax base increases, our millage goes down, and so I am, I was estimating a five percent increase in the tax base, uh, which would lead us to a one and a half percent decrease in the millage. But even with that, we're, it's still a five point five K, um, increase in the overall budget. Um, but I would like to talk about the salaries and wages under expenses. Um, we have a, um, salary analysis, wage analysis was completed by Ed Yura from Mercer's Consulting Group. We do that about every three years. Um, we gave them the stipulation that we wanted the minimum, uh, wage to be at twelve dollars an hour, who are our lowest-paid, um, employee. So with that, then he conducted the rest of the analysis and came up with a, um, salary structure schedule, and that is included in the, uh, amount in the budget, um, the new schedule, along with adding some additional, um, employees, and I've listed those, um, for you. A full-time librarian in the collections department, and a casual clerk, two in the collections department, a full-time library technician in archives, and three casual, um, uh, people in the marketing communications, uh, group, and all three of those departments are relatively new departments. Uh, marketing and communications is a couple of years now, and collections and archives, we just, um, separated out those departments this year. So, the managers of those departments are starting to, um, staff up for the, for the work that needs to be done in those departments. And then we have one full-time developer, um, in the information technology group.
So if it's not indicated as a full-time position, it's not a full-time position?
Right. It says, if it says casual, that's, that's a part-time person.
Got it, okay.
Right. Thank you.
And currently, we're at ten dollars an hour rate for.
Nine eighty-six.
Nine eighty-six.
Yep.
And the state law went up to nine forty in March, right? For minimum.
I, that I don't.
I think I read this one. Um, can you ta, talk to us a little bit about the process, about how you came to this? Also, um, just, just as a refresher from last month, we did, um, have in our ephemera the, um, the recommendations in that report, the analysis that, that was on that, and we did start to talk about pegging at twelve dollars an hour. Um, this is getting in line with, with where the state is going, um, by twenty thirty, I think the minimum is scheduled to be at, um, fifteen dollars an hour. More so than anything, uh, is competition. Is competition for people to, to be bookshelves and to, um, work these part-time jobs. We're competing with other employers, and, um, this staff, um, has, has talked to me and talked to the committee about, um, number of, um, resumes we see for each, um, each job we post, and how that number has declined, especially for these casual positions.
It's to be fair, too. Right? I mean, if, um, Ann Arbor's not getting any cheaper, um, and the area isn't getting any cheaper, so, I mean, it's, it's being competitive, and if, if ultimately, if we're gonna move towards fifteen, this, this gets us closer to it without making that big jump when we even have to.
Um, last year, we had, we had talked about perhaps, um, moving to twelve dollars for this current year budget, but we had just finished union negotiations, and with that, there were some grade changes, um, so we just felt that, um, we needed to put that off.
And the salary schedules in grades, that's what the references do, so we had a huge increase, uh, due to the grade changes.
And, and then, like Colleen said, instead of waiting until we have to, you know, increase it all at once up to fifteen, we're gonna, you know, to be able to do it in steps as the money is available, um, was the approach that we decided to take.
Right. And when we negotiated the last round, that was for a, a multi-year commitment, right?
Yes, the, the union contract is for five years.
For five years, so, um, making this move in one year is, is fair, if we, if we look at, look at it that way.
Bill, I have a question, a clarification question.
Yes.
So I understand about the twelve dollars an hour for the casual employees.
No, that's, that's just for our lowest, lowest grade, whether it's.
So that was my question, are there some?
Or casual.
Are there some full-time people whose hourly rate is currently is less than twelve dollars an hour?
Yes.
Yes.
Both, ex, both.
Because it goes, it goes by grade, not whether you're full-time or casual.
Yep. Okay. Great question, and thank you.
I, I wanna get back to the, the, the process, which I found, um, you met with all of the managers and you talked about, so when we, when we think about these positions, um, what I love about the budget discussion is how things like new positions show us where the library is going, right?
Yeah.
So, so what we really see here, what I, what I see here and what, um, Eli, Josie, and Bill were able to, um, clarify me, for me, is when you come into this library, um, and, and, oh, shoot, sorry. Dave, um, did, did some analysis for us, um, and brought it before us last month, and what he showed is, okay, number of checkouts is down, but the number of events and people coming through the doors is way up.
Thank you, Eli.
So, thanks, thanks, Eli. So, this staffing plan, this move to, um, expand and up our numbers, um, really does support, support our events, and since we created a marketing department, this is a way to give that legs so it can go further and do well to actually bring in more people, but then also to manage the flow of bringing in those more people.
Yes.
Um, that, to me, from the standpoint of, of what the mission of the library is and our vision and the work that we've been doing, it's in line.
So, last month when we talked about the, um, salary, you had, you know, reviewed the salaries like you said you do every three years, um, there was like a lot of range. There was like the very minimum, and then there was like the sort of mid-range and the maximum. Like, what did you decide for the, for most positions?
It varies, Jamie, posi, par, by individual.
Oh.
Um, when a person's hired in here in a grade, where they begin is determined by their experience for the most part.
Okay.
And so it's an individual decision. So if we're, if you're working here, and you're in a grade, and the grade range, um, changes.
Yeah.
We don't have people lose. So if you're midpoint, you'll stay midpoint, so you'll get that in, you'll get that increase.
That's good.
Right. And so, and the other thing that, um, I'll say is that if, um, a person's max, then their max changes, so you're no longer, you're, um, we are merit-based here in terms of our, um, salaries. So if you are max in a range, you did get your salary increase, but you got it in a, in a form of, um, a lump sum at the beginning of the, of the, of the overtime on your paychecks. So you don't lose that money, but you don't, it doesn't compound, right?
Okay.
Yes, it doesn't add to your base.
Right, it doesn't add to your base. So the library is very, um, is, the library's always been very generous, and the development of this salary schedule was part of that years and years and years ago, in the nineties. And so we've managed to, to, to the best of our ability. It hasn't always gone up. It hasn't always been adopted. There have been times when it couldn't be, but we recommended this time that we did. So that, those changes within the grade is, it's individual.
Okay.
Yep, so.
Um, another area that I would like to touch on is the, um, capital outlay.
I just, I'm gonna pause for a second. I, 'cause I, I'm still just kinda trying to real, I'm trying to absorb, that's why I was on the committee, 'cause I needed a lot of time and conversation to understand, but, um, I, it is, um, it, it's a pretty significant jump in personnel costs.
It's huge.
I mean, it's like two million dollars if we go back to what you're estimating you're gonna end up with this year to what we're gonna approve for next year. It's a little less if we go from approved to, yeah, and I just, um.
It's fifteen percent.
Yeah, it's, which is a big, that's a big jump, and I think that, obviously, I mean, I know you had quite a bit of conversation about this public meeting last time, um, so I don't wanna delay, but I, I am, I think we do obviously need to position ourselves to, uh, you know, really anticipate the increase in minimum wage, and it's also just like the right thing to do. It's hard for me to pick out how much of this, how much of the increase is related to addressing that issue versus adding positions. Um, we cannot afford to grow that, um, much year, year on year, so.
Correct.
My question is, like, how do we, does it sta, how does it stabilize? Um, you know, what do you think?
Right.
Like, two, two years from now?
I think that brings us to.
What does that look like?
Difficult discussions on Headley.
Yes, exactly.
Right, so this is, this is where it'll come up during our retreat. It's going to come up over and over again as what we do, what we, what our approach to Headley will be, like, along with other municipalities, uh, at least Headley's, uh, limiting us. So a discuss, a difficult discussion of Headley, but also, that's why we wanted to make sure we gave a full thirty minutes tonight, and we still have next month to talk about this before we approve this budget, which is, this is a big bite.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it, is it the right thing? Yes. And there, there are, there are some caveats to this, too, which is, we still don't know what, um, what the revenue scale will be for this year.
Exactly. I, I should have, I should have the, um, tax information within the next couple of weeks from Washtenaw County and the other townships.
Yeah.
So, so it could be less than we think, and then there's, then there's a different.
Some decisions to make.
Right, and, or it could be more. I think the, the, the amount is, it's, it's, it's fair to question. It's a, it's a lot. I think that it, what you're, the number you're talking about is the total number of salaries and benefits for all the people involved. It's not just what that salary schedule by itself was recommending.
Right.
But it's everything, and I think, you know, it's fair to point out for all the people, anybody looking at this, watching, listening here, the library has been very generous for a very long time in terms of benefits, but it puts ten percent in a four oh three B for its, for its full-time employees. I mean, that is, uh, a tremendous benefit. Um, the library pays a, a lot in medical and dental for the staff. That is something else it's done for a very long time, so I wanna make sure that we all understand that we're not talking just about the increase.
Straight salaries, we're talking about the fringe, yeah.
Right, for all of it.
Yeah, of course.
For all of it, right.
Which, what, what do you typically, just like, offhand, what do you calculate is the, you know, fringe, uh, on top of salary, like forty percent?
Forty percent, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And, and Bill and I talked about, uh, the numbers a little bit on the, um, four oh three B. Those new employees, what does that look like? And I think we estimated it, you estimated it fourteen thousand?
Sixteen thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars.
Sixteen thousand, so adding those positions add that kind of cash.
Yeah.
Um, one, one question we asked, uh, Josie, Eli, Bill, last week was, okay, let's say the numbers come back much lower, is it the minimum wage that you look at, or is it the new staff positions? And the answer, I'll let Josie sort of elaborate.
New staff positions.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah. I mean, that's your decision.
Well, I mean, we ask, we, you know, we, we look at, we look at what we, we need to, to make these new departments be as capable and as able as they can be with the work that they have. We created them knowing they weren't fully staffed and we knew they would be bringing staff numbers forward. I will say that every, we didn't, everyone didn't get what they wanted. It was, there were clear decisions that had to be made. But we were comfortable with the, the list you have, plus the increase in the minimums across, all, across the salary in terms of that sixteen, bringing people up to twelve who were below it, which is a lot of people.
I think this hugely important though, you know, like when, when you advertise for a library techs, I always see that and like gives me a pang because I was a library tech and so was Shreelanya before me. And like when I see the salary not that much more than when I had it over ten years ago, I think about how much more expensive it is to live in Ann Arbor than it was ten years ago. Like and to be humane, we are just gonna have to pay this money. Like there's no other way around it, I think. And, but it does lead us to questions of our capacity going forward and how can we grow? Like as, like as the community's tax base grows and where our like income is declining, like that's, we have to figure out how to provide service.
That's when we talk about override. We, we had, we had talked in committee about Headley as a discussion topic during the retreat this May. So, I give that back to Executive Committee and the Planning Committee. It'll be exciting.
One thing I'd like to point out, and, and this is a comparison. This isn't a justification for this recommendation. But the library has historically used a small, a, a, a lower percentage of its bu, operational budget for staffing than other governmental units. So, I wanna, I wanna make sure you know that we operate lean and efficiently and we won't not. So, this would put us at, what'd we say?
Just under fifty-five percent of the total budget.
Right, which is incredibly low number for personnel in a institution that's a service institution primarily.
I'm glad you brought that up. I think that's really important.
I think public schools is over ninety percent, but right.
Really?
I'm pretty sure it's very.
Close.
Yes.
I bet that's right.
Yes, it is, it's, it's close, yes.
I, I think one of the questions too is also just to, you know, imagine when you do this, you just like, it's very hard to, to backtrack from it when, when we hit a point in the future where we might need to.
If you, if the, and I, I, it's fair. We've had this happen when there was a downturn in the economy and the library's revenue dropped precipitously. The library froze salaries for three years across the board. We stopped doing programs that were marginal in terms of attendance and support. We did not go into any new initiatives. We did not launch any new initiatives. We were, we were, that would have been in two thousand eight. So, um, Mounds Creek was open, Pittsfield was open, Trevorwood was opening. And so, we were dealing with, with what that looked like. That put off maintenance, that deferred maintenance in some major areas that we've seen now, we've had to catch up to in the, in the, over the years. So, hard, hard choices. No one was laid off, but we did have a freeze hiring. We, we didn't hire a lot of new positions in that period of time. So, it was, yes, it's not easy. It's not easy to do. And that was when we were able, I mean, before Headley had the impact on us that it has now. So, I brought up before, Headley is an issue. And this is another opportunity to say Headley is an issue. And it's not only an issue for the public district libraries. It's an, it's an issue for all governmental units, municipalities, because it affects all of them. And I think we're not alone in wanting to see a legislative change about regarding Headley. But there are other options for us as well. Headley can be overridden by a vote. So, I think it's, there are caveats to that, but it can happen.
Essentially resets it and then your subject.
Our millage, our two-point-oh is in perpetuity. A Headley change is not in perpetuity. It, you have to go back at a certain point in time and, and do that again. So, it doesn't, it's not like you get your, a pass and you can do what you would have done twenty years ago. But the money is there now. I'm gonna say this publicly. I think this library enjoys an amazingly healthy fund balance.
That is true.
And to not take this minimum wage question up in light of that, in my opinion, is a difficult position to take and hold and maintain a staff that with the morale that we have and with what we get done.
I agree with you, Josie.
I know, I know you do, Jim. I'm just saying it publicly because I get to.
Yeah, I don't think there, I don't think there's a lot of disagreement there. And then the, the one thing that's a little hard to tease out for me is just understanding exactly, I'm, I'm missing maybe like what is the, what is actually the dollar impact of making the change related to minimum wage increases versus new staff positions and casual positions, which is not, not quite teased out for me.
So, that, that staffing report that we received last month, there, those numbers are broken down in there. And they're pretty good numbers. And Bill did a, a sheet that analyzes what that really is. So, when we look at staff staffing increases for this year, for full-time regular employees, the number of increase we're seeing is really, according to budget, I wanna say it's like four percent. It's really, it was really small.
So, I guess I'm just trying to understand in the aggregate, like of the two million, like.
The additional positions adds about two-hundred-and-fifty K.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, two-hundred-and-fifty is the additional positions. I wanna say the.
That's salary only?
That's salary only.
So, two-hundred-and-fifty time plus forty percent.
Raising our minimum to twelve was.
Not all, because it depends whether it's a casual full-time.
Right, so it's probably less than that. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay.
So, wasn't, Victoria, did you?
Thank you, Lynn. So, I, I, I do have a little bit of just sort of a knee-jerk of it's a high percentage increase, but I wanna point out this is a balanced budget. This is not rating the future in some way. I mean, it is a balanced budget. With the funds that we have in hand, we have an obligation to, to have a balanced budget and we meet that obligation with the plan that Josie and the staff have put together.
The three audit firms we met with, I will let Dharma and Victoria, they, they addressed our budget and our numbers. And it was, it, all three firms said, we don't know, this is amazing. Like when we said, okay, what, what's different about us? Why would you wanna work with us? It was, your numbers are so incredibly solid. We never see anything like that.
Yeah, the financial health was commented on multiple times.
Because the voters really value the Ann Arbor library. We're very fortunate. The whole community is. I mean, not just us as a board, but because then the service that we're able to provide to people, not we, you all.
Right. I think that really brings us back to, I mean, when I look at these roles here and I think about us bringing us the staff up to twelve dollars an hour, it really gets to the idea that the library is really the staff, right? So, I'm sure these positions didn't come out of nowhere and it's really to build capacity. We are, I mean, our, our events, our dynamite, I mean, if we're getting almost three thousand people at a single event on a single day, but expecting the same number of staff to do, you know, her, like just additional work beyond, way beyond their normal, you know, activities, you know, I feel like it's like a, like a magician's workshop or something. You know, suddenly we have an auditorium or a lavatorium and then now, and then it's back to holding collections. But for all those pieces to come together requires more, more capacity and capacity as people.
Right.
It also speaks to the libraries, I think, probably unlike any other library in the country, like their policy of encouraging anyone in any staff position to propose and to run events. Like I think that the, like the flip side of that is that you wanna make sure that all people are compensated in a way that, that makes that like a fair situation for them. I think, you know, I think it's, I think it's one of the coolest things you do. But I, I do think this change is an important element of that.
Yeah, we should, I mean, if, if we're going to expect innovative work or programs like the Bob Ross, you know, painting, you know, if, if, if we just stick with paying the minimum that we can, I just, I don't, I don't think we're that kind of board. I don't think we're that kind of library. Great. Any additional questions for Bill? We actually.
Didn't you, did you wanna talk about the capital outlay?
Yes, I was just gonna briefly talk about the, the capital outlay.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So, Lynn has provided the projects that he would like to work on and we have incorporated those projects into the budget. And it's the last item on page thirty-one. And so, we are looking at replacing the second floor carpet, the drop box relocation, youth restrooms renovation, a parking lot resurfacing, a third floor staff remodel and additional furniture. So, those are the, the items that he was asking to, to have included. Did we put those in the budget?
Where's the drop box going?
Yes.
So, the drop box currently is on the corner of the library at Spithin William. And the, with the new bike, protected bike lanes, there will be no parking over here. So, the drop box is moving to the center of, in between the two sets of doors, in the middle of the front door.
Okay.
Because when people come up to the library and we're not open, that's where they can drop their book and not wonder where do I go drop my book? And so, they're being, that's being fabricated and it'll be glass and protected in, in that space.
At the front entrance.
At the very front entrance, because there's pull-in parking now from Library Lane that's safe. And there's also parking spaces out front people can pull into and walk up and drop off from the driver's side as well as the library lane. So, we're, it's safe. Our, our, we used to have those drop boxes on the front porch years and years and years ago. People would stop in traffic to do it because there was no, nowhere to do that. So, when Library Lane went in, that helped a lot. Plus, the city, the DDA worked with us to get two short-term parking spaces over here to allow for that. So, we're, we're confident now with way library lanes configured. People have that. So, they can come up on the porch undercover within weather and drop off books, or materials, excuse me, materials, all materials.
What's the furniture? Is the furniture like for staff? Like are they, are they getting stand-up desks or something?
He just had furniture listed. I don't, I didn't.
It's probably a combination.
Okay.
So, just a number where when something breaks or we need something new, he's got, he's got that in there. He may have had him in something in mind he's had to leave. So, he's not here to answer that question.
It looks like a good mix of both, you know, public facing and sort of staff areas as well.
So, I.
It's all public except the third floor.
Right.
Third floor, right.
And I don't know that anyone here will know the answer to this, but I was struck by seventy-five thousand dollars for our small parking lot here. Now, Westgate, Westgate, we'd never have to pay for.
Well, we don't own Westgate.
Right, but the other larger parking lots that are other branches, are they, would they be much more expensive?
They're much newer. This one has to come all the way up, all the way. It's in really bad shape.
It's the equivalent of three layers of roof kind of on it?
Or more, yep, in really bad shape. So, it all has to come up. We need to do some grading because of the way the water moves out there and, and then put it, it's like a new, it's like new. So, that price is actually, Lynn, Lynn's happy, very happy about that price.
Are we making any changes or merely returning it to?
There'll be a concrete apron for the dumpsters, which will make it a lot easier on that part of the parking lot. We may do some gray changes to keep that, the hill, may bring that hill down, so there's not as much of a grade out there. Right now, I think that's as far as we've gotten. It won't be bigger.
No, you can't get bigger than that.
Won't be bigger. There will be, and there will be a way, there will be a way for someone in a, in a wheelchair or a Meco type device to get from the parking lot up to the sidewalk to come in the back. Because we need that for staff, but we also need it for event, for, sometimes we have people who lead programming who need that. And Library Lane's an option, but the back parking lot is not.
That's, that makes sense.
There's a little bit of a, a increase in library programming. I'm just curious to know what the thinking is there.
Um, well.
Purely out of curiosity, actually.
We're involved in some very good partnerships, one we talked about early this evening, where the library's financial contribution to that is much more than what we would normally spend on other programming. So, in order to continue to do that and to expand, we needed to consider what that programming budget looked like. And so, that's a part of it. Plus, extra, other programming in the system that we wanted to expand and do more programming. So, but a lot of it is the expense of some of the partnership program.
Cool. Is there anything that needs to be built in, in the way of addressing any kind of early action items in the strategic plan, which will come in January and, you know, there'll be some, there'll be four, four or five months left, right?
The consulting budget's part of the administration budget. And so, I thought about that when we, when I worked on the number with Bill.
Okay.
And I think that we're com, comfortable that it's adequate to get us started depending upon where, which way we go.
I guess I was thinking a little bit more like startup funds for some kind of new initiatives that might result. We don't know.
We don't know. And I think what I'd say to you then is to do a budget amendment and bring it out of the fund balance.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any additional questions?
Just a clarification. So, we're looking at the budget now and we're voting on it next month.
We vote on it in May at a budget hearing. And that's, and so, we'll know the actual numbers by that meeting.
Once we get the, okay.
Yes.
Great, well, thank you everyone. Thank you, Bill. That was rigorous. That was nice. Thank you. Moving on, space use agreement. Yes, would you like?
So, in, in your, every year, the library reviews and enters into a space use agreement with the Friends of the Library for the two spaces they use in the building. And the bookstore on the bookshop on the first floor and the space in the downstairs where they currently store materials. So, this space use agreement is, in language is unchanged. What did change is the space in the basement that they have available to them from the library. It is, it is on a, it's flipped from where they are now. They're currently next to this, this space, I mean, to the secret lab. And we've, we're, and we, we, since the library for the blind has been moved to the state library by actions the state library's made, that space opened. So, the Friends are moving to the east and the space next to secret lab will be used by the staff for storing equipment and things we need for the secret lab. Right now, a lot of it's down a hallway. So, we're trying to pull that out of a staff hallway and, and use that. The space available to the Friends is a little smaller downstairs than what they're currently utilizing. And, but I talked with them about that. And they've known this for a while, so they've started to adjust in how they're doing that. We will help them move that. We will help them, but we've offered shelving to them as well that we have available. And so, Rachel Passiva, who's the bookshop manager, will work directly with Lynn on making sure all that happens. She was here earlier. I don't see her now. But I, I went to the Friends Board Meeting on Wednesday. I gave them the same document you have with a, with the drawings of space and asked for questions. So, I did let them know that for the first time in my time here, the public library has had to rent storage space. So, we have two storage lockers and that we need for storage because we don't have enough for what we do now. And I let them know that if they felt it was necessary for them to do the same, if they were, if they use a storage locker in the same place, that we would help them with transportation of materials back and forth, that we could do that for them. And so, that was a way I could, I could, something I could help them with this decision. So, they know that you're talking about it this evening and they know that you vote on it in May. And then, then you, we sign it, they, the president signed it. And it's an annual agreement. This was drawn up a number of years ago to define this, this space use and, and their responsibilities and ours. Since this was done, there has been quite a lot of activity about the use of public libraries and their spaces by groups. And this is another reason why I wanted the, the room use agreement dealt with. If you, if a public library has a, a, a unit using its space without an agreement, then anybody can use its space without an agreement. So, that is why we have an agreement with the group, the only group that uses our space in this way. And so, that's why it exists.
Josie, how are they doing with their financials?
They're doing, they're doing very well.
Okay.
They, we just, we received recently half, fifty thousand dollars of what they intend to give a hundred thousand for the library. I see their financials. They have hired an outside bookkeeper now to do all of their financial work. They still have a treasurer on their board who brings that back and forth to the board, but there is a bookkeeper now working with them outside who's doing their documentation, their tax support, their, all their doc, their filings.
Great.
So, that's happening, which is very healthy for them. And so, they're, they're, they're making money. The sales, sales are fine. The Westgate library sales and the downtown sales are very high. And their bookshop sales, I mean, higher than they've ever been in my time here. So, we, they talked about that and what that means.
Did we, we updated the, or we painted the bookshop, right? When we did the.
It was painted and new carpet.
New carpet too, okay.
And we, 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 we did every, we helped them with all the moving out and the moving back and everything. The upkeep, the facilities upkeep and including main, including clean, cleaning is our responsibility in this contract. It's not theirs. It's ours.
Great. Thank you, Josie. So, well, that'll be up for vote next, next month. Moving on, proposed revised five-point rules of behavior policy.
I would move to adopt the resolution to adopt provisions to the rules of the behavior policy. The board.
Was it an item of action or we just, it's an item of discussion?
Oh, we're not, we're just discussing.
Library will vote fifteen minutes.
Great. Love and I revoke that.
At eight fifty-five P.M. Please make any final copies at this time and take all material to be checked out to a self-check station or to the circulation desk by eight fifty-five P.M.
I just have to say that in the movie, the public, the one time in the whole movie where I almost lost it and my husband was elbowing me and telling me I was gonna have to leave if I couldn't shut up, was when the library in Cincinnati did that at closing and it would just hit my funny bone. But it was exactly the same everywhere. And he was like, like this. And I was, it's very hard not to, to lie about that.
So, my mistake, I got trigger happy with reading resolutions tonight.
That's okay. You can be ready next month then.
We were only discussing.
Yes.
This was a topic, this policy was also a topic of discussion in the Executive Committee.
Yes.
Meeting as well. And I wonder if, Josie, do you wanna talk about the changes?
Sure, I can. There are a couple, there, you can see in what we have added and what we've struck. There's one strike and that is six, second offense, a number six on page thirty-five prohibits foods in the library except in designated areas. I took the opportunity, we brought, we're bringing this to you for very different reasons. But I took the opportunity to look at the whole policy. We need to take that out because Westgate is a library and we are allowing food everywhere in Westgate. The fact of the matter is, we don't have a lot of abuse of this. And when people do bring in food, for the most part, they're very respectful about space. We've learned in all those branches where we've had vending areas, people do bust their tables. They take, they take care of things. When there is a situation, it's a, it's. When there is a situation, it's a, it's, it's, it's rare and we can clean up. Rather than police about food, we are not, we're not gonna do that. The, we added non-alcoholic beverages and covered containers are permissible throughout the system, so that's in there. The priority on this was to make it clear that persons who are trespassed or who lose their privileges for any duration, um, according to the rules stated above and the, uh, uh, the list above are, may appeal to the library director and will be given the director's contact information immediately upon notification of revocation of library privileges. Currently, what happens is, most people will ask, who do I talk to? And they're told, the library director, and, and they're given my card. But it's not a policy that they're given my card. It's not a policy that they're told, you have the right to appeal and this is who you appeal to. Further in the policy, you see that people who are trespassed or, or whose privileges are revoked for thirty days or longer have an appeal with you. And that has happened in the past. What we are doing is for those persons who are, and we added the word trespassed, um, we, the library itself cannot trespass. The, and our police department can trespass. And that, that is why that word was not in the policy. But we do have trespass issued, we do request trespass, and the, and our police department comes, they meet with the individual or they intervene, and they actually determine if a trespass is warranted or not. And then the person is given a copy in that moment and we're given a copy. That's how trespass is. For the other individuals who lose privileges, I am able to say, if, uh, if, if it's someone who's drunk and disorderly in a day, in the day, and they'll, and they're cooperating, and they, we can say to them, you need to move along for the day, you're out for the day. That, that generally, that happens, uh, honestly, that happens most days. So that person needs to be given the information you may appeal. Um, in the, in the week and the thirty, and the, in the, 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 the warning out for the day, the one week, uh, loss of privileges, I generally decide that because of circumstances. Those individuals also should, will be told, this is how you may appeal. Um, and one month, if we revoke the privileges, they can still appeal to me, but they can also appeal to you and you think about. I will say, I think it's important to say here that many people appeal to me. For all sorts of, um, for, for all the reasons that you could be asked to leave the library, people call me or they come, they ask to come and see me. And I always talk to people. And sometimes I will shorten up, um, sometimes I will shorten things up so that it's not as long, depending upon circumstances. If they have an advocate from Don Farm or some, someone else who's working with them and they come with them and we talk through what, you know, their situation.
Sure.
We might shorten a twelve month trespass to six. But it's a discretionary thing, but it is based on the circumstances.
And this is posted on the website?
It is. Yep. The, all the policies are posted on the website. They're also available in all the locations in print, all of this, the rules of behavior. So this is pretty much what you see and marked up in, in yellow, yep.
Good. So this was, um, I just wanted to thank trustee Corrine on her input on a lot of the, um, on this and just kind of walking us through, um, the kind of language that would really help, uh, really help folks understand what is happening, you know, that, that the library when, when, when things happen at the library, it's, it's not evaluated in an arbitrary manner that these policies exist and that there are ways to, um, come back. Good, any other, any thoughts on, on this?
A couple of questions. Lording, it says loitering is prohibited in areas posted as no loitering. Where do we have that posted?
Um, at the time, there are no signs now that say no loitering. They were, we did have signs up on porches that said it for a long time and we took them down. Because people sit on the steps of the library and wait for the bus or they wait for their friends or they wait for the, um, bus to the airport. And so, um, loitering now is, is disorderly conduct on the premises, whatever that might be, if it's outside the library, so.
Right, I mean, all the other things that are prohibitions include our outdoor spaces and our indoor spaces.
Correct, yes.
Okay. I, I have one slightly nitpicky kind of comment about the smoking. The number two says it prohibits smoking, but we just revised our smoke-free policy to include things that are sort of tobacco use that aren't smoking per se. I wonder if we can word that to be prohibits, you know, basically have to conform with the non-smoking policy wherever it says.
Well, it could, we could do that, but we, we, I looked at this with the attorneys about, about this and the snow, the no smoking policy was the overarching policy. The rules support the no smoking policy. So you can be more specific here if you want to.
The lawyers say there's not a reason to do that.
I, I think my point about this is that I, I think you could argue that e-cigarettes aren't smoking or vaping isn't smoking, but it's prohibited in a policy that isn't then mentioned in the, um, behavioral.
The rules.
Yeah.
Then we can add it, a reference to it.
Yeah, so to just very clear that it's the same thing whether you're smoking or chewing tobacco inside the library.
Or rolling tobacco.
Yeah.
I don't know if you discussed this before, but when we started discussing this policy in executive committee, you, I, I think we also looked at a current list of people who are trespassed essentially. So if that's something that is, that you want more information on, I would just like, I would encourage you to talk to, to Josie about it.
Or if not the list of people, a, a sense of.
Of like, huh.
What, why.
What the scope of the policy is really.
I think what I would say to that is I, I can't violate people's.
Privacy.
Privacy.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm not gonna be doing, probably, doing a list.
Sure, yeah. But I think it was a question about the scope of it, basically.
It was, it was about over a period of time, the number of trespasses and for the, for the offenses.
Right.
And, um, and I shared that. I think that, um, I can say to you that, um, it's, it can be seasonal sometimes, it's about the numbers of people in the building sometimes. Alcohol intoxication is huge when it's cold outside. And we're very, very careful not to put people who are not, um, able to walk around out in the cold. So, uh, we work with the local, um, police and the, um, social services in the county and in the city about helping people get care they need. There are places you can be in the winter in Ann Arbor during the day in, in shelter if you're, um, on, if you're inebriated. This is not one of them, but there are places. So we work with them to help them get people there. Public drunken, disorderly, fighting, um, possession of alcohol in the library, openly possession of alcohol in the library, smoking in the library, possessing, um, rolling tobacco in bathrooms. Fighting. Being aggressive with staff, I think it's important to say. I think. We deal daily with aggression at the public desks, which is another reason why I think this salary increase is earned and timely. The kinds of things that people deal with across desks are, are, um, it's very difficult. The training that we put into that so that people feel comfortable to manage it and can help manage it. Now, when somebody walks up to you and you're on the desk at Westgate and they pull out a knife with a blade that long and say to you that they really like the tattoo on your arm, you know, I might wanna just take it. That's not a person you fool around with. Right? And that happened in the last couple of months. And the individual who committed that became irate and angry with us for taking it out of context and making a big deal about it. But the sta, I mean, and I'm using this as an example because I think it's important that you hear this. That person was someone who's been here for, been with us for a while and he knew, he knew what to do and you had a deal with it, did a great job. That aggression that we see on a daily basis is something that that person is trespassed for a year. That's, that's done. That, those are the types of things. I mean, we're, we're, we try to be as, as welcoming and inclusive and keep as many people in here for as long as they wanna be in here, all the time. But these are those boundaries. So it's, it's hard to get kicked out of the library and, from the sense of, you gotta do something really egregious. But un, but sadly, it happens. And it happens more than we wanna admit that it happens because it's our library and we love libraries and it's just hard to, it's just hard to talk about. But it's important to talk about. It happens.
We have to keep.
People safe.
Yes.
All the other people who come in and out of here, all ages, using the library and whatever the way they want to, they need us to make sure they can do that safely.
And our staff.
And so, and we do it, that's what we try to do.
A couple of questions I have that you might not have answers to right away. So when Jim said you were able to look at maybe numbers, that's interesting to me because you said, I think, almost every day, somebody may, might lose their privileges?
For the day.
Oh, for the day.
Not, not, not trespass for a year, no.
Okay, okay.
For the day.
Understanding what the scope is would be interesting, just from the standpoint of this is new information for me.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think the point that I was sort of interested in making is just that I think the po, the policy is used very carefully.
Okay.
And that's, um, because even when we were sort of talking about the scope, it's, it's relatively, like, the sort of ex, most extreme kinds of trespass are relatively rare.
Yeah.
And the, the policy is used very, very carefully. Um, and the, and the conversation has to do with just thinking about the policy being applied equitably.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, I have a lot of confidence that that is the case after having gone through the po, talking about the policy and sort of thinking about the, about the scope and that it is really, I mean, as Josie was saying, incredibly important to be able to enforce the policy, given the concerns about safety, especially on the front line.
But then also that the people who, who are trespassed understand our, our rationales and what's happening to them.
Yeah, and kind of have due, due process and relationship.
And I'll give you an example of something that we do. When a person's trespassed from the library and they're clearly intoxicated or under the influence of something, they get the trespass notice, police give it to them. They don't, they're not necessarily going to jail, right? It's a trespass notice. So it's in their pocket. And they don't remember all that happened and they come back. And the, the library does not lower the boom on them for that. And the law would let it, but it doesn't. The staff recognize them, they remind them, you're trespassed, it's for this amount of time, it's all locations. Cause that happens too. People get confused and think because they were trespassed from Westgate, they're not trespassed from downtown and that sort of thing. So we talk through that. And then I will say, ninety-nine percent of the people who hear that go, I beg your pardon, really sorry, I didn't remember, and we don't get trouble. Now that, there's, there is that person who becomes confrontational and difficult and the police have to come back. But that's not the common, just to help you out.
Your attention please.
Yes.
The library is now closed.
Retract.
So in terms of, in terms of numbers, we do document and we have, we have documentation of how many trespasses and for what over, over a, a, a long period of time. So we provided those numbers at request to the executive committee when we were discussing this, these policies, which is where this is gonna be discussed, to show that there are no, there's no trend toward, um, um, any sort of targeting or unfairness. And also to show exactly what people did to be trespassed so that we can see it has to be really egregious behavior.
Is it difficult for you to figure out how to enforce, apply, police the policy? So if you're trespassed at mallets, how does Westgate know that you're not allowed to come in?
He sends a security alert to everyone without, um, I mean, it ha, does not have a physical, we do not do photographs, we are not able to do that, but we have physical description. Also, across the system, if somebody swipes their card to get on a computer, there's an alert if they're trespassed, we get an alert. So then we know immediately. Also, we have security working shifts in all the locations and they, they know what people look like. Yeah.
Victoria, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I, I have one question about library privileges. So when people's privileges are revoked, they're prohibited from entering the building or using the library, does that extend to digital use? Do we do anything with their card?
No.
So anyone can continue to check out eBooks, they can't come and pick up a whole presumably?
That's right.
But they can use any kind of electronic resources we have available?
Right.
Which seems appropriate because there, there's no threat.
It's about behavior in the library. If someone were doing something illegal with.
Yes.
Within the context of their cards or on our debt or on our website, that would be totally different.
That's not this policy.
That's not what this is.
So I just wanted to clarify, we went over the, um, incidents where people were actually trespassed, uh, from the library. That means they engaged in some severe type of behavior that was really inappropriate and in all of those cases, police had to be called, right, to actually help issue the trespass. We didn't review, uh, any of the early offenses where a trespass wouldn't actually be necessary, where they may have been asked to leave for a day or a week or something along. Those lines, I just want to clarify, we don't, we didn't review that.
Right.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
And that was actually why I wanted to amend the policy was because I wasn't sure those people were aware, were always given notice of their ability to appeal so that they could actually do that, maybe have a conversation about their behavior and understand why, you know, they were asked to leave.
You actually have it printed out and handed it to them is what we had, I think.
Right. They, they, they're given my information, what they do with it or, or sometimes they wave it away, I don't, I, no interest, thank you very much, I don't want anything to do with that.
Right.
And then others take it, but who knows? Now, when you, if this policy's adopted, we'll have a, a, something that states it very clearly in the event that someone's asked to leave and for whatever limited amount of time with how to contact me right away. They may decline it, but they'll have it.
Right, and so in their conversations with you, do you advise them of their right to appeal to the board subsequently?
Um, if, if, yeah, if they're not satisfied with what my decision is, they always have the right to appeal to you. The policy absolutely states if a person for a certain period of time can appeal to you without appealing to me, but the, um, absolutely.
How would that, how would that happen with the day? Like, you're banned for the day, why, how would we come into play in that?
They could, if they felt like we were being, targeting them or they were being treated mis, unfairly. Or if there's somebody who comes in and over a month is asked to leave for the day four or five times because they're drunk, um, and, but they're not disorderly and they move along when we ask them to, we're not gonna trespass them. They may feel that it's inappropriate for us to ask them to leave at all. And if they don't accept me saying to them, yeah, yes, it is appropriate for us to ask you to leave, they might come to you and say, I'm being, I'm being bothered by the library staff.
I, I have two more small points, sorry. I feel like all my points are small, but they're still important. And paragraph, uh, the new paragraph eleven, uh, the bit about service animals, I wonder if our language could be cleaned up a little bit. I think we're more likely to say person with a disability these days and that there's a, uh, the handicapped is a term that we are no longer using in general.
Actually, we, this language is about ADA, um, because if you broaden this up, everybody with a dog will be in the library. Because everybody has a reason to have a dog in the library and that's a dangerous thing.
So I, I totally get that. My only point is that I, um, I have seen terminology, the, the general term that I see referred to instead of the handicap would be person with a disability. I would defer to you if you feel strongly that this is in line with, um, current terminology. I mean, I agree with you in that, you know, I love my dog, but she shouldn't be in the library.
Or your bird, or your cat.
Or your snake, or your peacock.
Or your donkey. So I, what I will say to you, I will ca, I will circle it and I'll go back.
Think about whether there's a different language we could use there that would still get at your intent, cause I think we agree in, um, the approach here. My only other thing, and I don't think this has to be addressed in the, the language in any way, but when I think about people appealing to this board, which has not happened in my time on the board, um, the, the process here seems right. You come to a, one of our regular meetings, um, but if it ever happened that someone said, you know, I can't make it to that meeting, um, as a board, I think we would want to make it possible for the person to appeal to us, even if it meant we had to do something, like have an extra meeting.
Well, they do have our contact information, so when I was serving in the, in the president role, like, people would sometimes call, cause our phone number is in, like, so maybe that will happen to you. Or occasionally send an email directly because they can like.
Right.
Look that up. Or even letters, like, to my house, so.
And they have sixty days.
Right, I was literally thinking if someone's like, I work the night shift, I can't make it to, we have a requirement that they appear in person. And if we heard that that was a burden for anyone, I mean, I think our recourse is we can have a special meeting and I would certainly not want.
To be open to that.
It to prevent someone from appealing. It to prevent someone from appealing.
It would make for a very exciting meeting.
I just want a second. I think that I, I need to understand, um, this question about using the word handicapped because I don't know, like the, the lawyer, I don't know if that's like a, a, I don't know if that's something that the lawyer is recommending because it should really, I mean, it is the Americans with Disabilities Act and I think that using people-first language is very important. Um, and if it's not a legal issue, Josie, we need to, we, we do need to make that change.
Okay. Great.
So the other thing I proposed that didn't necessarily make it in here was that the board be able to review statistical information on an annual basis at minimum regarding removals from the library. Didn't need to include the confidential information, but that was something that I thought would be helpful for us so that we have an idea, you know, of access.
So it didn't need to be part of the policy for you to get that information?
Sure, it doesn't necessarily need to be part of the actual policy, but I don't know if anyone else was interested in that, in being able to review that data. It would be something that they'd have to prepare for us.
I think, I think.
Do you see that in the public meeting or more at the executive committee level?
Well, it could be either or, but it would be more, it's more of a question whether you guys want that as well. That was something I was interested in, but I don't know whether that's something other board members see as valuable as being able to review that on an annual basis so that we see the numbers, the trends, the types of behavior that resulted in removals and, you know, Mallett's versus Westgate versus downtown.
Or event-related, seasonal.
It seems like a good idea to me.
Yeah, I mean, you, I think you bring, uh, like a new perspective for us because of the work that you do that the rest of us don't have. So even if we wouldn't see the, the need before you mentioned it, I think, I think that's like, that your presence on the board makes that, like, I think that, um, even if none of the rest of us want it, you should ask for it and we should too. I guess that's what I'm practicing.
I'm grateful that you're bringing the issue to light.
But we should talk about things we talked about, talking about things and not.
And, and that's, so that's the question.
No, no, I'm glad you raised it like this.
Whether or not we need, you would, you would want to write it into the policy, which would actually be totally appropriate or whether or not we want to take that on as a matter of just tradition and practice, um, like on an annual or bi-annual basis or something.
Or just have, you know, Josie have that on hand on an annual basis and we can just individually contact her for that information too, so.
When you, I'm sorry.
I, I just want to be really careful about, about people's profiles and identities.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my major concern.
Yeah, it does seem like an executive committee level discussion. Like I, I would hate for it to feel like something even, it's probably a really humiliating thing or embarrassing thing to be trespassed. So like if, but I think that you're, my, I read your intent as being like protective of the community.
Right, that would be my intent.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't present a list to you with names.
Right, right.
I wouldn't want to see it, right? Um, necessarily the, you know, confidential information and I would want to see statistical.
Yes.
Right, information. And I mean, if we're not collecting it in a spreadsheet somewhere, I would like for us to start collecting it in a spreadsheet somewhere. It's on some level, you know, I don't know unless someone's provided a more detailed report to me. Which is really hard to get, by the way, even, you know, from the police department. So it's, you know.
As we started this conversation, it came to me very quickly how little I knew on this topic in ter, in terms of what the issue really is. So when we get our packets every month, we get stats on who, door counts, right? For instance, or number of checkouts, like, like the num, the amount of data we can look at every month is, is really critical and it can inform policy decision. So the type of data you're talking about, you know, I, I'm always hesitant to give an organization one more thing to do.
Right.
And if we say, okay, we're going to look at this one, once a year and we don't put it in the policy, well then how do we, how, how do we prepare that for success? I don't know. Since we're not voting on the policy tonight, I don't think we need to have an answer tonight. I want the data because I think it will help us as we shift policy and think about things like, okay, like, oh, what kind of problems are downtown versus, or, or what kind of incidents are downtown versus what happens out at Mallett's Creek? That, that might help us think about when we go to the budget. Okay, we're increasing security at downtown for X, Y, Z reasons. It just gives us more data. Do our rules really work? Are we really communicating what, you know, are we communicating well enough for people to feel free to come and approach us, you know, if, if, if they'd like their access back, right? So I think that's what we also have to think about. It's not that there are these dangers that we're unaware of. I think it's more, for what I felt like this was going towards was, um, do people really understand what's happening to them and do they really, do they feel like they have access, true access, um, either? Beyond just Josie's card, um, and beyond, you know, even if it was just listing our email address. There's, there's got to be a way for them to even, can, do you understand what's happening to you? Can you repeat back what's happening to you? It's, it's, I think it's.
Oh, you're not going to get that.
Well, but, you know, we can try. I feel like this, it's, it's worth trying, right? Because otherwise, when you're in the moment, it, it might feel really arbitrary. So, I mean, even when we do have rules and expectations of behavior in the library. All right. Uh, any other thoughts on, on this? We'll discuss again before voting next month? Good, thank you. All right, um, moving on. Um, so we didn't have a closed session tonight, um, uh, but we'd like to have that for next, next month.
I would, um, move for a closed session at the May twentieth, twenty nineteen regular board meeting for, uh, direct, for the director's evaluation.
Second? All those in favor, or discussion, discussion.
So I would actually, um, we usually do an hour for this and, um, I'd like to ask if we could have a little bit more time this, this year just to give us some breathing room to incorporate our new.
Our new process.
New board members into the process.
Yeah.
I do remember it felt rushed last year.
Yeah, and I kind of, I'm sort of thinking of Josie and I don't want to give you the short end of the stick and we don't have to use an hour and a half, but if we need an hour and a half, we have it.
Reason why you can't do five-thirty.
Yeah, then there's a break if we under leave.
Great.
We will feed you.
Thank you.
Closed sessions we generally do.
So we're, we're saying that we're going to start at five-thirty?
Five-thirty on the twentieth.
And we will have snacks and food.
And between then and now, what happens is you will receive the evaluation, you will provide your own feedback and Lynn will create the collected document, which we will sort of all review together.
And a draft of my, my letter. Good. So, um, any other discussion on this? This is a closed session to review Josie's evaluation together.
Uh, how, what's the deadline on getting you the feedback?
Um, well, I'm getting the evaluations out to you tonight because I already have that from Josie, so, uh, I don't know what we, what was our timeline last time? I think it was like two.
I don't know if you have the tabulation document.
Oh, I sent that to you tonight.
Yeah, Jamie sent it to us, so we have it now and, um, I'm going back to look at the timeline again. I think it's really a question.
My timing, I think.
For you, yeah, to be able to do the.
I don't think it'll take that long. I mean, I think, um, like a week, week to ten days is probably what we did last time, I think. I mean, Josie's evaluation is maybe like five, uh, five pages or it was like.
You'd have about, you'd have about ten business days, basically.
Yeah.
I do, I mentioned this to Lynn earlier today, but this process, I think, comes like right after we changed presidents and then it's kind of like, oh no, it's time to do the evaluation. But it needs to be conducted in line with our budgeting process. So the timeline can't really change. So I do think it's worth considering, like involving someone external to help just manage the process. Yeah, like in the future.
Which is something that's actually in the recommendations.
It is another recommendation and I think we kind of felt like we didn't need it, but like it, that might ensure that like, because this is the exact same thing that happened to me as well.
It happens more quickly than.
Right.
Than, than we think it will. I think we can, let's just try to see if we can, I'm, I'm pretty confident we can get through this.
Oh, yeah.
Turnaround, but maybe we can add it to the strategic planning or the retreat and just kind of talk about it a little bit more now that we're in year two of using this process. This is the second year, so maybe we can add that as a little.
You should send that whole document to everyone. That's what you just sent us, basically.
Yeah, so it's, to clarify, that document is just like the final summary that we got from the consultant last time. So if you were on the board previously, you've seen it, but the.
But the new members will not have.
And can I just ask Lynn, when you send it to us, can you just like put in bold at the top what the deadline is? Cause I'll actually do it then.
Yes, I will, I will. I will put in bold on the top and then I'll also call in and check on.
This means to Victoria.
I'll, I'll, I'll do like a mid-check to, to make sure folks are, are, are taking a look and putting their comments in.
Thank you.
Good. So any other discussion on closed session for next meeting? All right, all those in favor? Oh, that's right, roll call. Sorry, thank you, Karen.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Um, moving on to citizens, citizens' comments. Anyone else? No? We are, we are going, we're, we almost made it to nine-thirty, I feel like.
Please.
Well, thank you for, everyone, thank you everyone, we will see you next month. That was longer than usual.